Good evening and welcome to the City of Commerce City City Council Meeting for August 18th, 2014. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Yes, do you have lights flashing?
No.
No.
Give me one moment, please.
Okay.
Now?
Yep.
Okay, Mayor Ford?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Bullock?
Yeah.
Councilman Amador?
Present.
Councilman Teeter?
Here.
Councilwoman Carson?
Present.
Councilman Benson? Ms. Teeter, or Ms. Carson, would you reach over and hit his button for me just in case? Thank you, my apologies. Councilwoman Mackel Downey? Mr. Bullock, would you reach over and hit his button for me too?
I thought you called me Mr. Teeter.
Counsel, I didn't. Councilwoman Elliott? And Councilman Douglas? Same, would you reach over?
He's not gonna be here tonight.
Yep.
He's not?
So put his on.
It isn't gonna hurt if we flip his button anyway.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. First item of business, I would like to ask the Council to consider an excused absence for Mr. Douglas due to the fact he's dealing with his father's funeral today and he has a valid reason for not being here tonight. Mr. Teeter?
I'd like to excuse Mr. Douglas tonight for personal reasons.
Thank you. Mr. Amador?
Second.
I have a motion as second to excuse Mr. Douglas for the meeting, missing the meeting this evening. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. I would also like to make note for the record that I did hear from Councilman Mackel Downey. Said he's running a few minutes behind and would expect to see him here shortly. And I will make, make for the record when we come back into our regularly scheduled meeting to, if he's here, which he should be. And I have not heard from Mr. Benson as of yet, so we'll see who shows up tonight. With that said, I need to ask the Council for motion to go into an executive session. Mr. Teeter?
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to CRS 24-6-402 (4) E. And these are both the same, does it matter? Also, executive session pursuant to 24-6-402 (4) E.
Okay. Is there a second?
Can't I say what they're for?
Okay, the first one's for the purposes of determining the status of negotiations with the Mile High Greyhound Park concerning the master development agreement. The second is for the purpose of instructing negotiators on water infrastructure issues. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried and my estimation is that we will be about an hour. And so I would ask the audience to bear with us, grab something to eat or snack or something. But I would imagine we'll be back here in about an hour after our executive session.
Of the eighteenth of August two thousand and fourteen for the City Council of Commerce City, thank you all for being patient. I'm sorry that we had an executive session that went a little longer than expected. First item I need to take care of on the, on the business items is to make the record straight that Mr. McAldowney and Mr. Benson are here with us and that Mr. Douglas will be out the entire meeting. And before I go any further, I want to say happy birthday to Laura Bauer, our city clerk. It's her birthday and it's a great way to spend it with all of us. So happy birthday Laura.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Now if I can get everybody to stand for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now if the staff will go around and allow the audience to introduce themselves.
Norma Portnoy with Kids First Healthcare.
Thank you.
Maria Zubia with Kids First Healthcare.
Robert Joder Adams fourteen.
Robert Vascha Board President Adams fourteen.
Pat Sanchez Superintendent Adams fourteen.
Robin Dwan Chief of Equity and Communications Adams fourteen.
Guillermo Serra.
Larry Quintana Adams fourteen Board of Education.
Troy Smith Police Department.
Patrick Buckley Community Development.
John Howard Information Technology.
Kathy Blackman Human Resources.
Roger Tenhamer.
Ryan Lance Human Resources.
Tabata Aller Risk Manager.
Maria DeAndrea Public Works.
Michelle Claymore Economic Development.
Rick Wells Regen LLC.
Chris Kramer Community Development.
Great, thank you and welcome to everybody to the meeting. First item on the agenda is going to be under Proclamations and Presentations and it's Safety Net Clinic Week, so I'd like to ask the representatives from Kids First Healthcare to come forward. I'd like to ask Mr. Gaylor to read the proclamation.
Office of the Mayor, Commerce City Colorado, proclamation: Whereas there are thirty-eight community safety net clinics including Kids First Healthcare and fifty-one federally certified rural health clinics located in forty-three counties throughout Colorado. And whereas these clinics were created by civic-minded individuals, healthcare professionals and systems, churches and other community organizations who recognized that there are countless individuals, children and families in need of access to healthcare services. And whereas Colorado's clinics provide an estimated eight-hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand visits to approximately three-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand Coloradans annually. And whereas these clinics, clinics provide essential healthcare treatment and preventive services to vulnerable populations in communities throughout our state. And whereas clinics like Kids First Healthcare are safety net providers, creating innovative solutions and delivering high-quality care to primarily low-income, vulnerable, at-risk Coloradans who are uninsured, underinsured or insured through public programs. Now therefore be it resolved that I on behalf of City Council do hereby proclaim the week of August eighteenth through twenty-two, two thousand and fourteen as Safety Net Clinic Week. Be it further resolved that Commerce City expresses our gratitude to Kids First Healthcare and similar facilities for their time, energy and services to underserved populations throughout Colorado. City of Commerce City Colorado, Sean For, Mayor.
Thank you Bob. I'm open for a motion from the council. Mr. Amador?
Move to approve proclamation fourteen dash sixteen declaring August eighteenth through the twenty-second, two thousand and fourteen as Safety Net Clinic Week.
Thank you, Mr. McAldowney.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Proclamation has been approved, however I have one little problem. I've got the playful cities proclamation, not the, the Safety Net Clinic proclamation.
Might I suggest we-
And I don't want to give these ladies the wrong proclamation.
Might I suggest we take a photograph but then make sure we get these nice ladies the correct proclamation?
Right, let's, I'll, I'll take the photograph with this proclamation, but I wanted you all to know, you will get the correct proclamation. And I was just going, I was reading through it as Bob was reading and I was trying to go, where's he, eh? This is not the right proclamation. So first before we come down, I wanted to say thank you to both of you and the organization for all you do for the children in our community that need your, need the services that your organization provides. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there any other comments from the council before we go down and, and take a picture? All right, come on down and join me.
Could I just mention, we have an open house this Wednesday from eleven to one at the main clinic which is behind the old high school, so if anybody wants to come and take a look, we'll have refreshments.
Always, food brings people out. agenda. And I did receive the signup sheet and tonight there is, nobody has signed up for citizen communication, but I will ask, is anybody here that wanted to sign up that didn't get the chance to, that would like to come and address the council? Seeing no one, we'll move on to the next item of the agenda, is approval of the minutes for June second, two thousand and twelve. During the conversation to, I legis-, the conversion to I legislate and approval of these minutes were missed, I'm open to a mo-, for a motion to allow Councilman Amador to abstain from voting on the minutes because he was not a seated council member of the council at that time. Mr. McAldowney.
So moved.
Mr. Teeter.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to allow the abstention of Councilman Amador. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Motion is carried. Now I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes of June second, two thousand and twelve. Mr. Bullock.
So moved.
Mr. Teeter.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the minutes of June second, two thousand and twelve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. That motion is carried. And we'll move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes items that are routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory and non-controversial. They are presented to council for a single motion and vote and any member of the council may ask to remove a specific item for further discussion and a separate vote. Tonight there are four items listed under the consent agenda. Does anyone on the council wish to remove any of these items? Seeing no one, Mr. McAldowney.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Bullock.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Mr. Gaylor, will you please read the titles of the consent agenda items?
Title of ordinance two thousand and sixteen, an ordinance amending the two thousand and fourteen budget of the City of Commerce City Colorado by reaffirming prior appropriations in the police donation fund in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, seven-hundred-and-six dollars, forty-five cents for the support of miscellaneous programs and the authorization of the expenditures thereof. Title of ordinance two thousand and seventeen, an ordinance amending the two thousand and fourteen budget of the City of Commerce City Colorado by reaffirming prior appropriations in the urban renewal authority fund in the amount of sixty-five thousand, one-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars for the support of the Derby Catalyst Program and the authorization of the expenditures thereof. Title of resolution two thousand and fourteen dash eighty-three, resolution approving quit claim deed transferring certain city-owned property to Adams County, Colorado for Locust Street and East Seventy-seventh Avenue right-of-way. Title of resolution two thousand and fourteen dash eighty-four, resolution approving intergovernmental agreement between City of Commerce City and Regional Transportation District for North Metro Rail Line local agency contribution.
That's the consent agenda, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you, Mr. Gaylor. I do have a motion and a second and I'll ask for a roll call vote. Let the record show, there's eight in favor, one excused. The consent agenda is approved by council this evening. Now we move on to resolutions. We have one resolution on our agenda, resolution two thousand and fourteen dash eighty-seven. Is there anyone on council that has any questions regarding this resolution? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on this resolution? Seeing no one, I'm open for a motion to approve the resolution. Mr. Bullock.
Move to approve resolution two thousand and fourteen dash eighty-seven.
Mr. McAldowney.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Title of the resolution reads, resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement for the provision of disaster emergency mutual aid.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Title's been read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Motion is carried. We'll move on to the presentation portion of our agenda. Mile High Greyhound Park. I'm gonna go ahead and invite the staff to come forward and make the presentation. Mr. Kramer?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Again, Chris Kramer, Community Development Director. We do have Rick Wells with Regen LLC here tonight who will be actually joining me for a portion of this presentation. This is a, another update in a series of ongoing updates to City Council regarding the progress with the redevelopment of the Mile High Greyhound Park. And so the format and everything should look somewhat similar as, this is pretty consistent with what we've been doing all along. So we're gonna go, hit a variety of topics as we go through this. The first one that we'll hit is another one that, that council has seen a number of times regarding the budget. This is just a quick check-in to see where we are with the budget. Since the last time we presented to council, not much has changed. A couple of invoices have come in, but overall, the total operating balance is sixty-two thousand dollars. The, the other budgetary item I would note for council, the city along with Regen, we are exploring the opportunity of looking at applying for an additional EDA grant, Economic Development Administration grant, to possibly aid with horizontal infrastructure. Council might remember that the city was recipient of an EDA grant that allows us to, that allows- us to, that allowed us to perform the feasibility analysis with Rick or Cunningham. That's what funded that analysis. So, this would be the second grant that we'd be able to utilize, uh, on the project. There are a couple of application windows coming up later this year and early next year, so we're exploring the possibility of using that, uh, to see if we could, uh, help, uh, finance part, portions of the infrastructure project. Another, uh, a reoccurring item that we've talked about with council, uh, is in regards to site cleanup. Since the last time we've talked, uh, I think council's aware that the, uh, the demolition and cleanup of the grandstand building area is complete. Um, and furthermore, we have received the NFA letter from the state, the no further action letter, that, that allows it to, to be considered clean for construction. Now, there are still gonna be portions of this site that, uh, haven't been necessarily analyzed like that, um, so there, there will be portions that still will require some environmental review and might possibly have some environmental cleanup that is required. Uh, but council should be aware, we still have the insurance policy that we utilized with the original remediation in place. Um, so, uh, that's really just an item for council to be aware of as we move forward. Um, over the summer, there was also some issues surrounding the, the weeds on the property, and, um, as I'm sure council's aware, we were able to, uh, mow the entirety of the project, uh, and we will continue to do that, knowing that it's a little bit wetter than normal summer, and if we need to address that again, we certainly will. Moving on to the negotiations, uh, of the memorandum of understanding and master developer agreement with our, uh, the developer that we signed the MOU with, Regen. Um, and this is the portion where actually, uh, Mr. Wells will, will come up and, and have a chance to talk to you about some of the work that he's been doing. Uh, but if council remembers, just as a broad overview of the MOU, uh, it was really contemplated to be about a hundred and eighty-day process, divided up into three separate sections of sixty days each. This represents roughly the halfway point of that ninety days, um, and a lot of what was laid out in the MOU, we are on track with. And so, to go over that with you, um, actually, Rick, uh, Mr. Wells is gonna come up and talk to you about some of the, uh, steps that he's been taking while the, this initial phase is, is underway. And that's the clipper for, in case you need to go on to the next one. Hi, uh, Rick Wells with Regen LLC, and I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to be here today and talk about the progress we're making on the Mile High Greyhound Park redevelopment. Um, as indicated here, we have been busy doing a lot of, uh, planning, studying, engineering, uh, looking at the site, understanding it. I would characterize it as economic and site due diligence, so that we know that we understand the site better, um, and understand the costs and opportunities for redevelopment of the site. A lot of that revolves around site planning, and so, we've been working with R and L, our architect for the, for the, uh, project, looking at alternative sites, site designs, roadlet networks, layouts of different, uh, vertical product that we want to build on the site that we think the product, the market will support, looking at residential densities, types of residential units, um, looking at the retail, retail densities, types of retail, where it might be sited, um, and without having any specific targets for retail or, or specific, um, uh, plans for any one individual piece of the plan, we're putting the plan together and saying, okay, how does this all fit, and how does it work together? And that's important at this stage, because all of the, the densities and the, um, the types of uses we put on the site, or plan to put on the site, will also impact the engineering and the traffics. And so, it's all an iterative process. We've done a traffic study that has established a baseline grid for traffic counts out there. We had our strips out. We've done all our, our counts in the area, and we have that basic data that we're now running through our traffic study, based upon that site planning that we've been doing. And so, uh, with that traffic study, then, we're also, uh, looking at road networks. Where are the right places to connect new roads? Because we gotta remember, there is no existing road inside that, that area right now. It's basically a blank slate, and we're gonna have to reconnect it to the existing, uh, road grid. And so, with the site planning, with the traffic engineering, we're starting to look at what's the best way to reconnect this part of Commerce City back into the existing city grid, um, and still get the kinds of, of uses and, and opportunities on the site that we're looking for. Another part of that is, uh, the engineering for the infrastructure. Uh, we are adding, um, a lot of new, uh, uses on the site. Currently, there's, there was just the one large building in terms of water use and sewage use. Now, we're gonna have new residents, we're gonna have new retail, we're gonna have a training facility, we're gonna have a lot of different uses on the site and a much more dense use of the site. That then, in turn, impacts the engineering infrastructure, or the, excuse me, the existing infrastructure on the outside of the site. And the primary issues there are gonna be water and sewer. And so, we've engaged in, uh, conversations and are working with, our engineers, Kimley Horn, are working with, um, the South Adams Sanitation and, and Water District, working through capacity issues, where the connects would be, what impacts, uh, different types. And again, this gets back to the usages. Residential has a different usage pattern for water and sewer than retail does, so how does that impact the usage on, on the existing infrastructure? So, we're working through that iterative process with them to determine impacts and costs related to the existing, um, utility infrastructure. Drainage, uh, we don't expect to be a big problem on site. There's already a regional, large regional system. There will have to be additional drainage built on site, but that's more of an internal site issue and cost issue, as opposed to impacting the surrounding infrastructure. All of those pieces then go into the economic and market analysis that we're trying to do on the site to determine what's the best use, what's the right use for the site, how does that use then generate, uh, property tax, sales tax, that can be used as a part of the public financing that's gonna have to happen for this project to work? So, that, that property and sales tax, based upon those different site uses, then feeds into the economic analysis and tells us what we can and cannot afford, and how we go about financing the project and structuring it, so that we can get the best advantage out of that public finance tool that we have on this urban renewal site. And, and all of that mixed together comes out in what we call the, the pro forma. We define some of the costs with the, through the engineering, traffic analysis, um, through the types of product that's gonna be built, the road network, how it connects with the rest of the, of the city grid. We look at the revenue opportunities with what sort of site, uh, what sort of revenue do we expect from the different uses on the site in terms of selling land and developing land, and also, what sort of economics can we expect in terms of the tip, the tax increment financing? So, all that's put together into pro forma, and we've gone through that on an iterative basis on a first step with, with the staff. So, it's been a busy time period. Uh, we've learned a lot about the site. I, I would say there's no, nothing that, that jumps up and says, uh, we shouldn't just keep moving forward and, and working through this process, as we have been. And we might get questions at the end, so... So, as it relates to the, uh, the steps laid out in the MOU for arriving at a signed and completed MDA, again, we still have the second half of this process to look forward to, and, uh, that's really gonna be taken up through finalizing a lot of the due diligence, the economics, uh, and the pro forma that, that Mr. Wells talked about, which will then directly, uh, inform the, the negotiations for the master developer agreement, which will accommodate, uh, all the, the various funding sources and the, the needs of the project, uh, and then we can then talk about who's, who's contributing what, uh, for that in the MDA. From a schedule perspective, uh, there is a public process that we're going to engage in addition to the actual, uh, MDA itself, there's, it will lead into a zoning process. And as council's aware, zoning is a very public process, um, and, and it's contemplated that prior to anything being brought from a public hearing, for a public hearing, that there will be some outreach to the public regarding concepts and plans for community input. We, we have, uh, utilized a fairly high level of, of community input. Council might recall the initial stages after the purchase of the property. There was a extensive and very successful public outreach program, and at that time, we had, uh, committed to the public that we'd bring this back prior to the public hearing process. And so, that's really what we hope will happen, sort of, as we get to the end of this year, maybe spilling, depending on how long it takes, maybe spilling into next year. Um, zoning approvals will then, uh, probably start occurring right after that, and that will involve public hearings that come to the planning commission and city council. You're, the, the urban renewal work that will need to be done in association with all of this will probably, uh, overlap with the zoning and the public outreach and, and occurs shortly thereafter. So, that might, uh, bleed into two thousand and fifteen sometime. And then finally, uh, as mentioned earlier, the MDA, uh, to follow the hundred and eighty day schedule that was outlined in the MOU, it's expected that, for that to be November, early December, to come back to council with a, a finalized agreement for consideration. Quick update on the Boys and Girls Club. The fundraising, uh, compared to the last time that this was brought to councils, uh, on their agenda, on your agenda, their, the fundraising is, is much further along. It's nearly complete. Uh, they are really trying to close that last gap. And, um, the Boys and Girls Club's gonna actually be sending out a campaign mailer to city residents for, uh, residents and, and other interested parties to be able to purchase bricks, engraved bricks, to be able, used on the facility. I, in fact, I think even council may be asked to, um, do a letter of support, uh, encouraging folks to, to be able to, to purchase the bricks as a, as a fundraising measure. So, that's very exciting. Uh, that's really good news, that, that they have made such great progress on that front. Um, in association with that, and it's really no accident, uh, Boys and Girls Club has submitted their development plan for consideration. So, that is actually going through the administrative review process with staff right now. We have brought Rick in to help ensure that it's compatible and works well with the other planning that goes on around the site. So, that's actually making great progress. The, the rendering that you see there was, was attached, uh, to that development plan that was submitted. They, that's not something that we necessarily would approve as a part of a development plan process, but we were very appreciative to get it, and it does give you an indication of the high-quality type of building that they are wanting to put on the project. So, uh, from what we are hearing from the Boys and Girls Club, they are still targeting the fourth quarter groundbreaking of this year. So, to update council on when we might be back in front of you for another, uh, update and action would be really associated with the sec, the MDA, ratifying an MDA to go along with that. So, again, that we're hoping that's November, early December of two thousand and fourteen. Uh, it'll probably be an executive session first for, under negotiation, uh, under the guise, or not guise, the, the premise of negotiations, followed up then with a public hearing to ratify the, the actual MDA. So, look for that later this year. Uh, very excited, and, um, staff is available, and Mr. Wells is also available for any questions that council may have.
Does council have any questions of, uh, the staff or Mr. Wells at this time? Nobody? Seeing none, thanks for your presentation. Thank you, Mr. Wells, for being here tonight. Um, we look forward to seeing things progress on the, uh, Dog Track site.
Thank you.
Next, I'm going to invite, uh, um, the school district to come forward. Superintendent Sanchez, I want to acknowledge the fact that former councilwoman Reba Drotar is in the audience tonight. Mr. Sanchez, good to have you here.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, council members, let me be here.
Move that up a little bit. Yeah, there you go.
It's not on.
Is that what the problem is?
Yeah, push the button right over there by the side, other side. Yeah, there you go.
Just start flipping switch.
On? You're on now.
There you go.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, thank you for having us here this evening. We have a short slideshow presentation for you to give you an update relative to what's been going on in Adams fourteen, and got some good stuff to share with you tonight. So, we have some celebrations. We've been in the process of some restructuring and really looking at improving things in Adams fourteen. I'm not gonna read the slide to you, but we have been really working on a lot of internal improvements, uh, mostly rebuilding trust, reestablishing trust, listening, doing some planning, and just re-engaging the community at a level that really is, is meaningful. Our parent involvement has increased significantly, especially at the district level. I think two years ago, we were less than twenty people coming to parent, uh, meetings once a month, and now we're ebbing and flowing between eighty to a hundred and fifty that meet with us on a monthly basis. And externally, also establishing rapport and beginning to reestablish trust, and it just is as simple as one person at a time, and it's just as difficult as one person at a time. But that's well underway, and we continue to do that. We're not where we want to be, but we're on track. We are significantly raising the bar for students, staff, and community, and really, our change, um, effort is really around setting expectations of how we behave and how we treat people with dignity and respect, and that's really pretty common for those of you that are from Commerce City that, that expect that, and I think we're trying to reestablish that. We also have been doing a lot of work with just helping kids map a path to success. Um, many of you have shared, uh, some examples of our course guide that really tells kids, if they're in elementary school, what path can they take, what courses should they be taking, if they're gonna go forward with a four-year plan for college or a associate's degree or certification. So, it's not really about college prep or, uh, vocational education, is what they called it when I was younger. It's really given the kid the choice to do either, or one or the other, or both, if they choose to. Have done a lot of work with racial equity. We continue to do that work. We're one of the few districts in the nation that have trained all of its classified staff and licensed staff, and we're in that process. Um, we have a thousand employees. Five hundred of those employees are classified, which means they're not teachers, they're not principals, they don't carry the license for that purpose, but they do live in this community, they do thrive in this community, and there's a lot of pride. And we are seeing a great response from folks in our classified ranks that are really engaging in equity, equity work, and really not afraid to talk about race. And that's part of something we have to be able to talk about as educators in a district like ours, so that we make sure that all kids have access. It's not about making one race better than another, it's about understanding that difference has value and that we can have, though both of those things exist and be successful together. We've been really working on changing the profile of our academics, and we know that the very simple thing that I will tell you is that the way you change a school or a school district is by really trying to engage the hearts and minds of the adults. What people believe about kids manifests in their behavior, and we need to spend time really thinking the best about our kids, so that when that behavior manifests, we're setting things that are excellent in place for our kids. The trend table you see there is, uh, the year prior to our team coming to the school district, and you can see that many of the arrows were pointing in the wrong direction. Um, after our first year, we saw a significant jump, one of the si, largest jumps in the first, uh, in, that we've seen since two thousand and seven, and we're continuing that trend this year, albeit more modest than last year, but we are still trending in a positive direction, and we're holding pretty stable. And we've had four of our schools, uh, outperform, um, the state on growth, four of our elementary specifically. And I would tell you, Monaco, Rose Hill, Hanson, and Central have shown significant growth, and it have shown some, outperforming the state on growth, which is really great to see. And we've even seen Rose Hill, and now I can tell you that not one of our schools is in the lowest level of turnaround, which is the red zone. Um, we have no schools any longer in the red zone, and Kearney is now the only school we have in the green zone, which means that they are at performance. We're not where we need to be yet. We have a lot of schools in the yellow still, and I'll explain that in a minute, but I think that what I, what I want to say to you is that we're still trending upwards, we're still got a lot of work to do. We're in year two pretty heavily right now, um, and I think as we head into, uh, year three, we're really excited. We're seeing a lot of momentum really start to tip with kids, and I, I think the most important thing I see is kids talking more about college, kids being positive about their future, and adults really speaking about our kids in a way that is really beautiful and powerful and respectful, and I think that's really exciting for us. Um, at this time, I do want to invite two of our committee members from the We Believe Committee, uh, Ms. Reba Drotar and Maria Zubia to join me, um, and I'm gonna ask them to share a little bit about our Imagine the Possibilities idea. I just want to touch on a couple of slides, and then I'm gonna have them explain a little bit about what We Believe's all about. This is kind of what we currently have here, and if you look up on the board, you'll see that, um, this is the current state of Adams fourteen. And what, the purpose of this slide is to illustrate, every year, we're turning away six hundred kids that could be benefiting from preschool, and because they don't meet five factors, they have to meet five factors that are risk factors for them to be qualified through federal funding to be able to access preschool. So, if you have four factors that are risky, you don't get to access preschool. And if you look on the slide, you see that, uh, Alsup and DuPont and Monaco do not have preschool option for kids, and that's concerning. So, what we're proposing is a STEAM middle school, science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics, which is really aligned with a lot of the global economy and what they talk about. And the only thing that's in STEAM that I would add is foreign language is also pretty critical. Not just Spanish, we're talking about Arabic, Mandarin Chinese, world languages. We also need to make sure that every elementary has access and more slots for preschool, that's something we're working on. And I think the last part is this idea, I'm gonna go forward here, to having a fourth and fifth grade academy. So, as we talk about briefly having this idea, and we have some images of a STEAM middle school and what that means, the question comes, what do you do with the old Adams City Middle and the old Kearney? City Middle and the old Kearney? Because, you know, they're really struggling, their older buildings. In the study that we've been doing to raise awareness about this, we realized we do have to pour some money in there to make it usable. But to make it usable would allow us to put fourth and fifth graders in those venues in a way that is safe and it's cleaner, but also it allows us to give fourth and fifth graders some enriched access to elective classes like enriched math, engineering, arts. So they have more electives and start thinking about their future. We know that research would indicate now, kids are deciding as early as fourth grade what they want to do after they get out of high school. And it's hard to imagine that. I know from my own frame of reference, that seems pretty early, but I could tell you, the sooner we start that conversation with kids, the better. What did the book Man's Search for Meaning talks about? The person with the why to live can endure anyhow, and I think part of our job as educators is to help those kids settle on and identify what they want to do when they grow up, even though it might change. Having that vision of the future is really important and really compelling. So I'm going to let you guys kind of share some of these, and I'll hand it over to Reba and Maria, and they'll share a little bit more with you.
So this idea is incredibly innovative, especially for our Commerce City area, that all of these buildings stayed the same, except now the high school since the 1950s. So anybody that knows me knows that I would have had to have researched something backwards, forwards, inside and out before I would support it. This idea will help these children in this particular part of Commerce City. So you have to think about that if there are 600 children not in preschool, then where do we put those children? So you take the elementary schools and you turn them all into preschool, three-year-olds and four-year-olds through third grade. And that is the time that children learn to read and to comprehend. So that's all they would be centered on. So we would bring, we would renovate those schools and make them usable for the little ones, and that's their realm. Then all of the fourth and fifth graders would be pushed up, and we would have these two academies at Kearney and at Adams City. And this particular idea, since we've been out in the community a lot, has really taken off. A lot of people really, really like that the fourth and fifth graders would not have the influence of the sixth graders, and not the influence of the little biddies, but they would be totally focused on things that they are learning, sciences. And you also remember that these two middle schools are very full right now. We have at Kearney some classrooms with curtains down the middle of the classroom and where we stored instruments that were not usable. Those are classrooms now. But there are three grades in each of those schools right now. If we just used the schools for fourth and fifth grades, that's just two grades. So they would have a lot more room for science and things like that. Then we push all of the sixth through eighth graders up to middle school, and it would be this incredible school. And there would be a health component. You can talk about that. And the second floor would have a working garden on it. And you want to talk about the neighborhoods?
Yes, sure. Oh, go ahead.
So what you see in front of you, even though it sounds scary initially about having approximately 1,700 middle schools, middle schoolers on one campus, it is broken into three specific houses or small schools within the school. So what you would see is a parallel that would be similar to what we have at the high school, which would be medical, like a medical house. It would be one that's engineering and energy, and one that would be arts and humanities. But what you do, when you're able to put three smaller schools on a shared campus, is you share electives. And you have more elective options because you have higher enrollment. That's our economic, that drives our economic engine, but allows us to also allow a student who might be in an engineering pathway to take jazz band, or to have a kid who might be pre-medical be part of ROTC. And it also gives us a better training ground for, not to mention athletics and other components, but really sharing the resources like a really nice auditorium, a big cafeteria. So that economy of scale comes in place for us, so that it doesn't feel like it's such a big school, because they would go to lunch as a group, they would do a lot of activities as a group, but there's room for interaction through electives in that small house community. And what I would tell you, it's not something that is really new. It's something that's been proven and been effective in other parts of the U.S. Junction City, Kansas is one model that we've looked at, and they've had tremendous success. And now, after 10 years down the road of them doing a similar approach, not only at middle and high school, they're hovering above the 85th percentile in graduation rate and completion rate and college acceptance rate and rates of being successful in college. So we're not tinkering, but I think the small learning community is really a powerful way for kids to feel part of a smaller school inside a bigger campus. So go ahead.
So as you could see, the STEAM middle school, without the STEAM middle school, we can't really provide that preschool space for children. So really, the issue is around space availability and the fact that our community is growing. The city has become larger in numbers, especially with the youth, and we just don't have enough place to put them and educate them appropriately. Now, I will tell you that on a personal level, my kids go to a charter school that's built really nicely, and the new one that's being built on 56th and Quebec, that's where my seventh grader is going to go. And one of the things he told me years ago, and I'll share this really quick, when he was, we were watching debates on TV for the presidential election, and one of the candidates said, "Well, you know, every parent should have the right to choose good schools for their children." And he looks at me, he goes, "Well, what happens to all those other kids that their parents can't choose a good school for them? What happens to them and what happens to the schools?" He was nine when he told me that, and I was like, "Hmm, good question. Let me think about that." So when we started looking at this concept, I'm like, "Well, it's true. All these children are in our community, and they all deserve the same amount of everything that the other kids have." There shouldn't be a separation between, yeah, the charter schools and the public schools when it comes to the availability of space and learning. And so for me, it's important that these children start young. I'm tired of listening to the fact that we are providing all this intervention and all this money into intervention in middle school and high school, when really, studies show that early childhood education is where you need to start. So if we can start with those 600 children that aren't in school now, and like I keep telling people, if we invest in the future now, we might not see a return in our investment tomorrow, but we'll see it in about 12 years or so. That's what I'm hoping. Anyways, the STEAM school, we have some wonderful designs. It's going to be very ample, a lot of space, open space. It's very new, combination of traditional with open spaces that promotes more engagement. And one of the exciting things for us, too, is our health clinic that would be there. We are, one of the things that kids' first healthcare is known for is being a school-based health center. So if you can imagine your doctor's office being picked up and dropped off in a school, that's pretty much what we do in these schools. And we've been doing it since 1978. So having a full, comprehensive clinic at the school would also really help the children's learning, because we all know, one of the main reasons kids leave or have absenteeism at school is because they're sick, and their parents need to take off work to take them to the doctor. This way, they can actually have a nice place to go, which they do already. We have very limited space at the current middle schools right now, but we'd love for this to happen. So one of the, I'll let Reba talk about the rest, but I just wanted to let you know that the community, we have been promoting this and been out in the community at many events, and the feedback we're getting from the families is that they really want this early childhood education, and they really want to see this happen. So I'm just telling you that if this happens and it goes to the voters, we will be back and receive a resolution of support from all of you.
So just to quickly go over the high school initiatives, they are still continuing on the same path and really have already begun, and we have embedded some of what we call career technical education. You know, we have welding, we have machine shop, we have woods and construction trades, we have business. Those pieces will be distributed among the appropriate academy. So you'll see the one that's underway, that we're under construction, would be medicine. We've been in conversations with Antioch Medical Center. Arts and Humanities, we're trying to expand some additional arts offerings that might be offered at the high school. We're pretty strong in engineering right now as far as programming. When we talk about program, we want kids to have choices, not only for a certificate, but an associate pathway and a four-year pathway. And I think the difference is that the kids get to choose which pathway. We don't choose for them. And I would say that having a trade under your belt is a stepping stone to be able to go to college and have a decent living wage that might afford you the opportunity to go to college later on. But if you want to go four-year, that's fine, too. So we will have supports for both. And I want to wrap up here. Right now, the status of where we are is, this is still under study. We call it an awareness campaign. We've been working on it for a fair amount of time, trying to study. And as you can see, we have a much clearer picture this year than we did last year. I feel much more prepared. And I think as an organization, we're much more prepared and studied it. And I would tell you that the board will be taking probably a decision on this next Tuesday, after which we'll see where that lands, and then that changes the rules, as you know. But at this point, this is kind of the status. And I think part of it is going to be this idea of a two-part initiative that would require a vote by the voters for a bond, which is a significant amount that would go into the buildings, and I think an override in addition, and they'd have to both pass for it to be effective. The bond is approximately $95.7 million. The override's set, as far as we've studied thus far, $4.98 million. So for residential value, home, about $0.32 a day, or nine, close to $10 a month. For commercial business of $100,000, it's about $35.83 per month, approximately. And what I would tell you, that I didn't mention in the conversation about STEM and fourth-grade academy and high school academies, is this whole idea of applied academics. So the idea of kids learning through doing with hands-on learning is really what is the root foundation of this. So kids learning in third and fourth grade and fifth grade, how to apply a concept with Legos or with small levers or with small hands-on tactile learning is really what the foundation is, what we need kids to have. So you think about that, and you think about the resources, untapped talent we have in our district. Many of our kids walk in the door bilingual. And if we could add a third language or a second language for a kid, now they have that, they have some applied learning under their belt, that's what the global economy is asking for. The only other third piece they would need is the language component. And we're studying that as well, looking at having a seal of biliteracy, so kids can leave the high school with a high-quality diploma, a certificate of associates or a four-year pathway, and a seal of biliteracy would help them really be someone that wants to be hired and someone that hopefully, like we say, can be successful and come back and live in our community and stabilize our community. So that's kind of what we're working on, but we're happy to answer questions if you like. But that concludes our large overview. Anything I forgot, Reba?
Well, you did touch on this. What kind of blew me away when I looked at the school district right now are things like course guide. And this week, you'll be receiving a sample course guide, and I want you to really look at it. Something like this has never happened in Adams 14. And I just want to say from the We Believe group, we have been stunned at the outpouring of support for this all around. And just even coincidentally, I want to mention this, it just happened just recently. Every single administrator of School District 14 gave, and they gave, I think the amount was something like $54,000 or $5600. And the people themselves, the residents and the families, we've just been overwhelmed. And I hope when you see all of this, that you'll be as excited as we are. You'll also be getting a little brochure that will outline what we've talked about tonight. And do you have any questions for us?
I'm sure there will be some questions. Anyone on council have any questions or comments before I say my piece? Mr. Macaldoney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you all for the presentation this evening. It's an incredibly exciting vision. It's a great story to see the gains that have been made in that short amount of time. Obviously, the focus is on the right things. I'm really intrigued by the concept of this progression of learning, as you've described it, and I think that ability or the opportunity to bring the young ones in and really create that environment of thrive is incredibly exciting. So hats off to you on the work done so far, and all my support for the road ahead.
Well, we've been very lucky to have such a supportive board, and you know, and two of them are here with us tonight, Mr. Robert Vashaw, Mr. Larry Quintana. And I mean, the board's vision has been very clear about making it about kids and making sure we start delivering on the promises that were made.
Okay, anyone else? Mr. Amador?
Thank you, Pat and Reba and Maria. I'd just like to echo what Jason said, but also when this does come to the school board and it is ratified and official, I would hope that we are using social media. And please feel free to tag my Facebook page, because I have numerous constituents there. And I think that outreach is going to be the most important thing to rally support for this. I know the last time there was a bond on the ballot for the school district, it was somewhere in the realm of maybe 300, I think, that it failed by votes. And I know that every vote counts, especially in the slim margin of victory that I won by. So every vote counts, and just please keep me in the loop. I know that there's been numerous community outreach meetings, and it seems like I can't get to them all. But definitely, when that happens, please let me know, and I'm sure there would be other council members in support.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Anyone else? Crystal, Councilwoman Elliott?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for the presentation. It's exciting to see the tremendous things that have happened in the school district over the last few years. And of course, myself, a product of Adams 14 Schools, very proud. I'm going to echo with my council member colleague here regarding the Facebook and social media. Feel free to advertise anything, or I know that we are friends, Reba and I, so I would like to offer my support in that capacity. And additionally, you have my contact information if there's anything that I can do. Reba and I talked just briefly at the outreach last week, and I can honestly say that I did witness some excitement with handing out the little hand, whatever they were, fans, whatever they were. But people were getting excited. They were asking, "Well, what is this about? What are you promoting?" And I heard the buzz. And just in those brief moments that I was there, I feel that this is something that can definitely work to be something greater. And so you have my support as always, and it's good to see that good things are coming out of the district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilwoman Carson?
I'll be brief. Thank you for coming and the presentation. The trying over there is enormous, and I want to take my hats off to everybody. Everybody is just stepping forward 110, 120 percent. So I can't thank you enough for that. It was a great presentation, and like my fellow counselors, if there's any support any way I can, let me know.
Thank you. We'll take every bit of support we can get. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one, first of all, thank you very much for coming in. And this is more of a partnership, I think, than most people realize. The nine of us up here and the staff for the city are here to create and grow our community, and we can't do that without proper education of the community. And as I've told you all many times, that when people look to move their businesses here, to move into our community, first thing they do is check to see how the school districts are doing, where their kids are going to be educated. Just like Miss Zubia said earlier, it's an important factor to all people. Um, just like Masubia said earlier, um, it's, it's an important factor to, to all people nowadays. I mean, it's, it's different than it was when I was a kid. You went to, you just went to public school. Now there are so many choices and we have to strive to make sure that both of the districts in our community, um, are top par for being able to create and offer opportunities, not only for the kids that will be running the city and the school district someday, but for the opportunity for businesses and developments to move in and, and the opportunity to continue to grow our community into the type of community we want it to be. I mentioned to the, to you the last time we were together, how, uh, there's four of us up here that, that graduated through District fourteen. And it's, it's me and, and, uh, Mr. Amador, Mr. Teeter and, uh, Councilwoman Elliott. And we're proud of that. Uh, I've had one, my oldest son graduated from, uh, District fourteen as well and two from, um, twenty-seven J. But it's an important part of a community. When I went to school at Adam City, as did when Rick and, and Crystal, and I think it started to slip away a little bit, um, during, uh, Mr. Amador's, Amador's time, um, we don't, we don't have that camaraderie within our community that we had when I was in that district. And it's important that we make the district, um, open to the community and, and engage in and drive our residents to participate because of the importance that school and that district have on, on the community. So I applaud you for, for, uh, going after this bond issue and, and override to help create a better environment for our children. Um, I think it's great now that we have, uh, a Board of Directors for the school district that is, is very open and wants the city to participate. That gives us more opportunity. Um, as I just read your letter about the homecoming activities, uh, that you had placed at our dais. And those things I think are important. I talked to your new, um, athletic director at the outreach and you guys did a great job at the outreach. You, you know, you were there in full effect and that was great to see. But I told the athletic director, hey, I'll do everything I can to help both districts. And one of those things that, uh, I was thinking about because Mr. Benson has brought it to my attention and I, I mentioned it to the athletic director is a flag football game against, uh, the city council and some of the officers, those who want to participate with the varsity football team, just to get them ready for that first.
Oh, that makes me laugh and nervous at the same time.
Yeah, but whatever, whatever. You don't want to do it before the season begin? You want them to get really good before we do it? Oh, yeah. It's flag football. Um, but you know, when we were, when we were in school, they had the donkey basketball and stuff like that. And it generates a, a, a sense of place for residents within the community. And I think we have to re-tap, um, that opportunity because, because it's went by the wayside. And, and I'm there to help any way I can. I can't speak for the other nine council members, but if you need me at an event, you know, I've been at several. But if you need me somewhere to help promote the district, I would offer the same thing to Mr. Fiddler at twenty-seven J. We have to grow our education opportunities for the children within this community if we want to become the community that I envision.
Right.
So thank you all for having such passion for what you do and to the Board of Directors for helping to try to move this district forward and create the educational opportunities for all of our children.
Right.
So thank you again for coming in tonight.
Thank you, Sean. If I just may, just a quick closing comment. It really is, I'm glad you said partnership because I think it is two ways. And I really am also here to tell you, we're here for you as well. Um, I know that we've had a lot of great conversations and your staff has been fantastic from the chief of police and fire and, um, city manager's office. It really is to, you know, I think the more we can model as adults what healthy relationships look like, the better off our kids are going to be. And I think the, the best example that I think about is from one of my colleagues and one of my friends who said, "After it's all said and done, we want our kids to have a better place to go to school." All adult issues aside, that's really what this is about and I, but I do want to certainly, uh, confirm that our partnership is strong and getting stronger and we want you guys to come be part of what we're doing and, and re-engage. I know the alumni are, are very proud and that's beautiful and, but it's also two ways. Uh, just as much as you're up there professing anything we can do to help, we, we feel the same way. And we, we are opening the door again and we, we also, uh, value our partnership and we're really excited to go forward and continue making this a better place for people to, not only to, to live, but to thrive. So we're just honored to be here and thank you for having us.
And we're, we're looking forward to the resolution of support to come before this council. So when you're ready, um, we look forward to seeing you back again and you're welcome here anytime. Love to have you.
We'll be back.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And we'll move on into our budget, to the Community Development Budget Presentation. And, uh, we've got Mr. Kramer again. Busy night for you tonight, Mr. Kramer.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, um, I'm here to, uh, go over the department overview for the Community Development Department from a budget perspective. Big picture, uh, we, we are a department that, um, has a lot of our expenses really related to personnel. We don't necessarily have a huge budget like some of the others do in, in materials and equipment. Uh, we don't necessarily do a lot of CIP projects that actually have trucks and, and materials. So most of our budget is, is utilized through, through personnel services. So this is a snapshot in a format I believe council has seen with all the other departments as well. We have switched a few things around within materials and supplies and services and charges. Some of those monies, uh, we've evaluated and analyzed how those get spent and have tried to fine tune and really do a better job of, of placing where those dollars are. Uh, so that accounts for a little bit of the percent change between materials and supplies and services and charges. The net result ends up being pretty similar, obviously, to the 2014 budget. We did make a few, um, cuts to a few different, uh, line items to, to offset some of the other gains in some other places. And as a quick overview, obviously, the divisions that, that we're talking about here are the administrative division within community development, building safety, the housing, uh, staff that supports the Housing Authority Board, neighborhood services, and the planning division. Uh, from an additional request perspective, the one item, uh, as you can see, we don't have any, uh, that fall under the first three categories that, that council's seen a number of times. We are proposing a new building inspector. Currently, we have three building inspectors, uh, that, uh, are, are quite busy throughout the day. Patrick Buckley and I, who's also here in case we get into this issue more, we have been paying attention to this for quite some time. Um, our residential permits are obviously picking back up. We still are not quite to the level that we were pre-recession, uh, but we're certainly much further ahead than we were 2009, 2010. Additionally, uh, our commercial permits have picked up significantly. And in fact, actually July, uh, had a, a fairly large, uh, overall commercial, uh, permit and inspection number compared to July of the previous year. So, um, we are, uh, it is not without a careful consideration that we put this on there. It would bring the total number of inspectors up to four. We obviously have some options where we could, uh, wait and see how the rest of the year goes, a full building cycle, um, some things like that. But that is, uh, being put on the, the, the budget as a request. It's not folded into our regular, uh, budget that you see here simply because it's not been approved yet. Other than that, we have no, uh, again, because of the nature of our work and so much of our, uh, uh, budget is really wrapped up into personnel, we don't really have any other special consideration items or, or capital equipment requests before you. So, um, myself and Patrick are available for any questions that you might have at this time.
Does the council have any questions for Mr. Kramer? Councilwoman Carson? Okay. Anyone else? Seeing no one, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Now, uh, we'll go do the, uh, Human Resources Budget Presentation. I'll invite Ms. Blakemore forward.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'm Kathy Blakeman. I'm Director of Human Resources and I am here to show you the budget that we have for human resources. This budget is also for our organizational development and for our risk management. As you can see, taking a look at our budget, um, here, I've not made very much change to this budget over this, um, past cycle. And so materials and supplies, that's something that we're sharing with risk management. We're able to make a bit of a reduction there just by, um, utilizing, um, one another's budgets. And then also within services and charges, we were able to reduce that, um, a little bit in one of the professional services since it's things that we're now, uh, utilizing While I don't have anything additional that I want to, um, talk about as it pertains directly to the budget, I did want to let you know that within 2014 and into 2015 and 16, where the Human Resource Department is spending its time is, um, in partnering across the organization heavily in these three particular areas. So we, we do a lot of other things within HR, um, but these are the ones where we are wanting our, our, um, our budget and interest to go. So now that we have a wonderful risk manager, uh, here, and that's Duetta Allert, she's sitting over there. She's putting a lot of effort into the safety program. There's a lot of things that we've done, um, this year in getting programs going. She's got some great ideas also for 2015, which is built into this budget. The training program that we have for 2014 that'll go into 15 and 16 has a lot to do with not just the employees, but within leadership development as well. And then within the health and wellness, I am really proud of the wellness program that this organization is now starting to put together. We were recently written in the Denver Post for the program that we have here. We're getting a couple of phone calls from some of our sister cities on what's going on within our wellness program. Um, that wellness program has been mostly funded through grants and we're hoping to be able to do that quite a bit within 2015 and 16 as well. And we're also hoping that the impact of that wellness program will impact the health budget, so our, uh, medical benefits as well as we go forward. We've had a very high participation rate this year of employees within that wellness program, so we'd like to see that continue within, um, our upcoming years. So that's all I have for our budget. Is there anything else that you would like to ask of me?
Counselor, have any questions for Ms. Blakemore on the, uh, Human Resource Budget Presentation? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Now we'll move into administrative council business. I do have a few here that I need to bring up. Um, there is a need to call a special meeting on September 29th in Louisville's study session in order to hold an executive session. I'm open for a motion to call a special meeting. Mr. McAdonie.
Are you able to state the purpose of the, uh, special meeting?
I don't have that here of Mr. McRae or Mr. Gavin. Purpose of the special meeting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Uh, the purpose of the special meeting is that, uh, the procurement for the outdoor pool, uh, the bids will be due September 12th and so we're proposing to bring the construction contract with you, to, to you that night. Just keep us on schedule for next summer.
All right. So that's the executive session.
With that said, I would, uh, move to, uh, replace the regularly scheduled study session with an executive session, special meeting, uh, on the date of September?
Twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth.
Mr. Teeter.
I'll second that.
Have a motion to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion is carried. Special meeting, September 29th. Special meeting is set. Um, I need to, uh, make everybody aware that I will be out of town, um, Thursday morning through Sunday evening and therefore, Mr. Bullock will be the acting mayor in my absence. And then I have, uh, an item that I wanted to bring up to the council after doing the Cold Water Challenge and working with the chief. Um, the FOP has donated five hundred dollars to the Fallen, what do they call it? The Fallen Officers Fund for, uh, the Widows, Officer Down Memorial, whatever, the Officers' Widow Funds. Um, because of that donation from the FOP, um, I would like to ask the council to utilize discretionary funds and between the nine of us, match the FOP's donation to the Cold Water Challenge, um, uh, donation for the Officer Down Fund. Mr. Benson?
I'll move.
I have a motion to use discretionary funds to collaborate, collectively generate, uh, five hundred dollars for that fund. Is there a second, Mr. McAdonie?
Second.
I have a motion to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion is carried. Mr. McRae?
We do have the, uh, the video from the Cold Water Challenge last Thursday evening. If council and those in the audience would like to see it.
Run it. That'd be great. Chief, thank you for, uh, putting that all together and, uh, hopefully we made a statement to the city of Brighton. And, uh, hopefully we've, we've done pretty good on raising funds for the organization. And, and thanks to all the staff that participated. I know you couldn't see me and Rick in that video, but we were there and, uh, as was, uh, some of the administrative folks, Brian, Jim, there were, uh, Kathy was there. There were a lot of folks that were there. Nice. Um, so and Lisa, the administrative secretary, Laura was there. Roger was in, yeah, but I don't know, he was in full wet suit, flippers and a snorkel. He didn't get wet at all. You weren't there, Jim. You should have done that. I, I think it was, uh, for a great cause, so, so thank you, thank you for that and, and thank you to the council for, uh, matching that FOP donation. And we'll move into reports. Do you have more?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a couple of items of administrative council business. One, I believe, uh, we distributed to you, uh, a letter, uh, for the mayor, uh, to sign on behalf of the city council regarding the Boys and Girls Clubs in Metro Denver's fundraising campaign for our own Commerce City Club. Uh, but of course, before the mayor can sign that letter, a letter, city council would need to authorize his signature. So if, uh, if council is so inclined, a motion would be appropriate.
Motion is in order. Mr. Benson?
Move that we, uh, authorize the mayor to sign a, uh, letter supporting our Boys and Girls Club.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Bullock, seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion is carried.
And then just one other minor item. Uh, next Monday evening is set aside as city council's 2015 budget retreat. Uh, in years past, we've started the budget retreat at three in the afternoon and so we've provided dinner. Uh, given the agenda that we anticipate for next Monday, uh, we've decided to start that retreat at six P.M. The question for council- The mayor has previously given his deposition. City manager has given his deposition, and tomorrow Karen Stevens in my office is going to be deposed, giving her deposition. I'll be attending that. This is an ongoing issue, but again, I emphasize, the city is not a party, but we're certainly in interest in the case, but we're not subject to any liability in the case. Just an information item.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did distribute via email this week's edition of the city manager report. We have updates in the report regarding a planned opening house in Derby to be held next month, an update on Russian thistle in some particular areas that were brought to our attention by Mayor Ford. We have an update on the Cold Water Challenge. You heard about that and saw the video earlier. Some more specific details on the folks that participated and the money that was raised. We also have an update regarding an issue that was brought to our attention by Mayor Protem Bullock at Contra Estates. We have that update for you. And we've also addressed the weed issue near the corner of 60th Avenue and Parkway, and then we've included the city council work schedule. I do have one other item. We wanted the opportunity during a regular meeting to formally introduce you all in the community to our new Economic Development Director, Michelle Claymore. She's been with us for a couple of weeks. She was actually here two weeks ago, but because of the length of the meeting, we didn't ask her to stay till the bitter end so that we would have an opportunity to introduce you to her. I think most of you have had a chance to meet her already. We're thrilled that she's joined us. Not only does she have great experience in the Denver Economic Development Community, but she's well-known and well-regarded within the Economic Development Community here in Metro Denver. She spent the last 19 years working for the Jefferson County Economic Development Corporation, so her network in Metro Denver is terrific. We weren't exclusively limiting ourselves in our search to folks with extensive experience in Metro Denver, but it's a terrific bonus to us that the person with the best experience and the best credentials also happened to be right here within Metro Denver. So, we're thrilled that she's joined us. She's already having a positive impact on the organization, not only because of her economic development abilities, but she's a great team member. Other folks on the leadership team and the senior staff are already enjoying working with her, and she's making us a better team. So, we're thrilled to have her, and at the risk of embarrassing her, I'll invite her to come forward if you don't mind just to say hello.
I was gonna say, it's a must. You have to come up to the podium. Welcome to the organization.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and the rest of the council members. I'm very excited to be here. Thank you, Brian. That was very nice of you with that introduction. I used to be a singer part-time, so it's very, you shouldn't give a microphone to an ex-singer. But yeah, I've been here about two weeks now, and I'm just thrilled. I already am falling in love with the city, and I hope to spend the next 20 years of my career here. So, and I look forward to working with all of you and the wonderful team that I'm meeting here in Commerce City. So, thank you.
Thank you, and I think it's important. I did get a chance to visit with Michelle for a little while and her husband. Just so you know, Brian, I haven't passed it along, but you were invited. Her husband does fly fishing training, and with you having your property, I thought it'd be a perfect fit. And I know we still have to go on a little tour of the city.
Yes, would enjoy that.
I'm looking forward to that.
Thank you.
And just so you know, that most of us up here, we had, my former mayor, Protem Dominic Moreno, had set a goal of having an Applebee's somewhere for his mom, so please keep working on that.
Okay.
But we know you're going to get a lot of pressure because the need for sit-down restaurants is, you probably, you've only been here two weeks. You've probably already heard.
I've heard it loud and clear, yes, Mayor.
That's the big desire. But I have to tell you, a good friend of mine, Preston Gibson.
Yes.
With XL. You know Preston because he was with.
I do very well.
With the same economic development organization that you came from.
Yes.
And he already has called me and said, congratulations, you guys have got the best now.
Thank you.
So, I wanted to pass that along, and we're happy to have you aboard and look forward to seeing you tie down some of these needs for our community.
I'll work very hard. Thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you. Anyone else have any comments? No? Great, thank you. Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Okay, Brian, anything else? That's it? I'll go through mine. As I mentioned before, at the last city council meeting that I was going to be sitting down with the Union Pacific for a special dinner with, it was very intimate, there was very few people there. The governor was there, a couple of state representatives, including Dominic, and it was a great opportunity to talk about the economy and the fact that the rail lines do improve our economy, but I made it very clear, with all that extra money you're getting for adding all those extra trains, you need to make sure your people learn how to disconnect them within 15 minutes and move them off of our roads. So, I think they got that message loud and clear, and we are scheduling meetings between myself and the UP and myself and Burlington Northern, so that I can reiterate how important it is to keep access open for our community so that people can be able to migrate from one side of the tracks to the other. Since we have two sets of tracks that converge in our community as well as many highways, it causes a barrier that we have to be cognizant of for our residents and their needs to travel throughout our city. I also went and gave a speech at the Adams 14 School District Community Rally, had Rotary, the Airport Coordinating Committee meeting, me and Renee, or me and Rick were both present. We had the Rotary Golf Tournament, our regularly scheduled Rotary meeting again, and the Neighborhood Outreach Event that, over at Pioneer Park, which was well-received. A lot of people showed up, and one of the things that came up there, Mr. Benson was asking me, when that sod is removed, he had an idea that it could be utilized in one of the new parks up north. I did pursue that, found out that we can't use that sod for a new park up north because the ground won't be prepped by the time the sod comes up. I did talk to Tony in the Parks Department about what we can do with that sod and make sure it goes to good use, and I think it would be a win-win for the community if we were able to cut that sod and allow our residents to utilize that sod in their yards to help beautify the residential portion of our community so that it doesn't go to waste, and it would also save the city the money of hauling it off. But it's beautiful sod in that area where the new water park's going to go. So, if we can try to plan as we move forward with the opportunities so that we can benefit the community in multiple ways by doing these projects, but it's just, it would be a shame if that sod went to waste when we have the opportunity to give it to people. With that said, I have nothing further. I do know that Mr. Bullock's been waiting patiently because I'm sure he has something he'd like to add to the report section. Mr. Bullock?
The only thing I'd like to add is, me and Mr. Douglas were going to give a report on the conference we just attended, but because of his absence, I texted him and let him know that we'll give the report in September when we're both here and can give it together. That's all.
All right, thank you. Does anyone else have anything to add to my report? Seeing nothing. If there be no further business to come before the city council this August 18th, we are And happy birthday, Laura.